... and I call this meeting to the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Harbin, roll call, please.
Compton, Jacobson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gladback, Carnish.
Here.
Ackley.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Thank you.
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestibule of this hearing room. At this time, I would ask, excuse me, all commissioners and all audience members to please silence or turn off cell phones, pagers, or any other device that may interrupt our proceedings. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to revise or approve the planning commission's meeting minutes for November 20th, 2014, at our regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the November 20th, 2014 meeting.
Motion, Mr. Jacobson.
Second.
Second, Ms. Kane. Commissioners?
All in favor, motion carried.
At this time, I'd like to accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application, staff, any updates or additions since the package was mailed last week.
Yes, we have 11 emails regarding Agenda Item C1. 10 of those were previously sent to the commission. One of them is an additional one that is on your desk tonight. These are all in opposition to the conditional use permit.
I'd entertain a motion to accept into the record the handouts.
Mr. Carnish? I move that we receive, or approve and accept all of the staff reports, attachments, memos.
Motion, Ms. Kane. Second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Sykes. Commissioners?
All in favor, motion carried.
The consent, we have four consent agenda items tonight. They will be read and approved with a single motion unless there is someone who wishes to remove it from the consent agenda to a public hearing portion of the meeting. I will read all four consent agenda items. Item B1, request to rezone Lot 115, child's estate acres, from RS 72 to RE for the purpose of allowing the construction of an accessory building up to 3,000 square feet. Applicant TJ Wiles. General location, 25th Street and Rose Lane Road. Case number Z hyphen 1412 dash 09. Item B2, request to amend Sections 5.22 and 5.23, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding adding community center as permitted, as a permitted use in the BG and BGM zoning districts. Applicants, City of Bellevue and Mission Avenue Collaborative. Item B3, request to final plot, pardon me, plat, lots 1 through 53 and outlots A and B, Ashford Hollow North, replat 1 being a replat of Lot 2, Ashford Hollow North. Applicant, Ashford Hollow Development LLC. General location, 48th Street and Rayner Parkway. Case number S hyphen 1412 hyphen 26. Item B4, request for a conditional use permit for tax lot 9B located in the southeast quarter of Section 22, township 14 North, range 13 East of the 6th Primeridians, Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the purpose of an 84-foot monopole wireless communication tower and a 12-by-30 equipment shelter. Applicant, SBA Communications Corporation. Location, 1409 Erston Avenue. Case number CUP hyphen 1412 hyphen 06. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to remove any of the consent agenda items to the public hearing? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve each of the consent agenda items, each for a different reason. Case number B1, approval based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance as well as lack of perceived negative impact upon the surrounding area. Case number B2, based on approval to correct and oversight in our zoning ordinance with regard to the definition of community center. Case number B3, approval based upon conformance with the approved preliminary plat. And case number B4, approval based upon compliance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area, and compliance with FAA requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ackley, second by Ms. Kane. Any further discussion? Commissioners, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Item B1 will proceed to City Council for public hearing on February 25th. Item B2 will go to City Council for public hearing on February 25th. Those are Wednesdays, and the City Council will be addressing that date at their next regularly scheduled meeting. Items B3 and B4 will move to City Council for public hearing on February 9th. We have one public hearing tonight. I will announce the case and then ask if there are any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that they would like considered in the record. Those testifying should come to the podium, say their name, and spell their name, and sign in for the record. Testimony will be limited to three minutes or less, and I do reserve the right to shorten the testimony if it gets redundant. I will ask if we have, being everybody's here for this tonight, if we have four or five spokespeople, and everybody else is going to speak, that we use those four or five, and they could speak for the group. After any testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we will close the public hearing. Bottom line is, tonight and every night here, use the golden rule, treat others who are speaking in the same manner as you would like to be treated when speaking. Our first public hearing, request for a conditional use permit for Lot 1, Pilgrim's Landing, replat 1 for the purpose of 130-foot monopole wireless communication tower and a 12-foot by 30-foot equipment shelter. Applicant, SBA Communications Corporation. Location, 14102 South 22nd Street. Case number CUP dash 1412 dash 07. Staff, are there any updates?
Mr. Chair, I'll have to recuse myself for this matter due to a potential conflict of interest.
But the records show that Mr. Ackley is exiting the room 7:08 PM.
Mr. Chair, there are no updates other than the emails that came in after the report went out, as I mentioned earlier. I would like to ask, how many people in the audience intend to testify this evening? Can you get a show of hands? Ms. Harbin, she's going to put the sign-in sheet on the desk over here. As the person in front of you is speaking, the next person, please get up, sign in, print your name and address on that sheet, so we don't have people taking time at the podium to fill out their sheet. And when you come up to the podium, please state your name, spell it, and give your address as well.
Applicant, if there's an applicant here, I would invite them to step forward and present their request.
My name is Jenny Byrd, and I'm here representing SBA Communications Corporation. I am actually with Pyramid Network Services. We're a site acquisition firm. We are proposing the installation of a 130-foot monopole at Pilgrim's Landing Church. We were given a data loss coverage map by Verizon from SBA where there's...
Ma'am, do you state your name, address, and sign in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. My apologies.
And also, can I have whoever wants to speak next, while she's speaking, come up and sign in, and we will continue that through the testimonies.
Okay. My name is Jenny Byrd, and my address is 7755 Reed's Road in Prairie Village, Kansas, 66208.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. Okay, so, the area in question, we were given, we had actually originally approached the school right next door. Many jurisdictions recommend that we start with schools, city land, and church land. In your, in the ordinance for Bellevue, there wasn't such a recommendation. However, we did meet all of the conditional use permit requirements of setbacks and so forth. We've made an offer to the school that was rejected, so then we went next door to the church. Within the search area for the data coverage map, which I believe you have in our application, the data need far exceeds what they have. So, we looked in the search ring. There's no other tower within a quarter-mile radius of the proposed location. I did receive a number of the emails opposing this project. If you would like me to address those at this time, I can, or if you would like me to wait until everyone has spoken, I can address them then.
Why don't you give the public a chance to respond, and then you'll have a chance for rebuttal.
Great, I will do that. Okay, well, and I know that the planning board came back and had suggested the location south of the pilgrim church. However, after discussing with pilgrim church, they have other plans for that parcel, that part of the parcel, and also, the current location is, in our opinion, as far away as we can get it from the residences in the area. If we were to put it on the south of the church, it would be literally in everyone's backyard. Also, if we were to put it on the east side, it would be closer to the residences. That was our justification for the north side of the building. May I answer any other questions at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward, say your name, spell your name, and sign in for the record, please.
Again, could I have somebody else, while he is waiting, while he is speaking, come in and sign up, sign in, so we don't have this delay?
Good evening. I'm Harold Harris, H-A-R-O-L-D, H-A-R-R-I-S. I reside across the street from the church at 14101 South 21st Street. Thank you, Chairman Carnish, and all the members of the planning board, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the cell towers scheduled to be constructed at Lot 1, Pilgrim's Landing, and replat 1. As you know, SBA Communications is, will construct the tower for use by the primary provider, Verizon. My comments tonight are not about the construction of the tower, but the proposed location. SBA is a leading independent communications expert. They have constructed thousands of towers in North, South, Central America, and even their CEO has opened the bell at the stock market, did so on December the 5th of last year. They have constructed about 92,000 in the state of Nebraska, 15 in Douglas County, and 6 in Sarpy County. So, their experience in construction is well documented. Of the six locations in Sarpy County, no tower is constructed near a subdivision. Even the one that's, and the only, only one in the city of Bellevue, near Fork Creek Road and Harville Drive, is not near a subdivision. So, if this one is constructed, it would be the only tower in the entire Sarpy County area that would be constructed near a subdivision. Normally costs about $325,000 to construct a tower of this type. The completed project consists of utility wires, housing, equipment for the transmitters, receivers, and electrical power, the tower, and the antennas itself, all of which are not natural and conflict with the present scenery. The primary provider, Verizon, can lease up to four additional antennas from other companies. So, the possibility exists that one tower can house as many as five additional, five different antennas. I think you can imagine how unattractive this can become. I don't know how much the landowner would be getting per month by leasing the tower to SBA Communications, but due to the prime location, the landowner can get thousands of dollars. Score one for the commercial part is zero for the subdivision. I am only one body in opposition of SBA project. In other words, the David versus Galilea scenario, therefore I ask for your understanding. Open areas be most suitable. The terrain elevation at the proposed location is about 1,100 feet above mean sea level. The tower is scheduled to be 130 feet high, which is equivalent to about a 13-story building, thereby having the claim of being the highest structure in the surrounding areas. The transmitting tower of a, of a, of a, transmitting range of a tower is about 1.7 miles per thou, per 100 feet, hence this tower can have a range of about 2, 2.5 miles. So, moving the tower to an open area would not have a negative effect on connectivity with other towers. Therefore, I respectfully request your humble consideration to the night construction of this tower.
Say your name, spell your name.
My name is Jeff Smith, S-M-I-T-H, and I currently live at 14406 South 23rd Street in Pilgrim's Landing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Before beginning my testimony, I want to thank the planning commission and the staff for service and the great job you do for the creation and enforcement of zoning ordinances. I know it's sometimes a thankless job, but I really appreciate the work you do to make Bellevue a good place to live. Thank you. In addition to the kudos, I have some disappointments in terms of the application, and I'd like to review some of the ordinances in terms of my opposition to the proposal. In terms of rationale for the application, I think it would help to know why the tower is needed to improve cellular and data coverage. Do we have a problem with access in the area, and if so, to what extent would these issues be remedied with a new tower? I think it's important for all of us to know how wide an area would be served by the tower, and what impact would the tower have in terms of service to the community. I guess the other question I have from the applicant is, what has the company done to explore alternative sites in non-residential areas, other than to state, quote, "There are no towers within Verizon's search area that meet the height requirements"? Assuming this is a legitimate need for a tower in our area, what if anything has been the company done to seriously explore viable alternatives in non-residential areas? I'm concerned with the lack of detailed response by the company to any perceived adverse effects the tower might have in the neighborhood. Interesting note, in terms of the application, the only adverse effect listed by the company is a visual impact at the base of the tower, which could be mitigated by landscaping and other buffers per site plan. The only other potential adverse issue raised on the application is related to lightning, lighting, but since the FAA does not require lighting, it will not be part of the structure. Certainly, I'm not an engineer, but I can think of several more adverse effects which construction in the building of 130-foot tower and a generator would have in the neighborhood per Section 60601 and 60602 in terms of the conditional use standards. To be specific, the tower and the generator, I believe, would have the following adverse impacts upon the neighborhood and the welfare of the community. One, I concur with the planning staff who noted the construction of an unsightly tower would have a major negative visual impact on the neighbors and the residents of Pilgrim Landing and Trigaron subdivision, and many who view the tower on Fairview Road. Two, I believe it's safe to say the tower would significantly impact property values of the homes located close to the church. Three, I fail to see how the building of the tower with the use of large cranes and derricks would not pose an immediate safety risk, especially to the small children enrolled in the church's childcare program. Four, the plan offers no recourse to neighbors should the site not be maintained well. Five, surely operating a generator on Main Street with close neighbors does not lend itself to the comfort and general welfare of the community. Six, and in terms of overall public safety, I'm concerned the company did not address the very real risk of falling ice from the tower, which is a major issue for us living in greater Omaha. I do not know how this risk could be mitigated, but I know this is an inherent risk of large cell towers in northern climate, and if you have, would like to research that, I would encourage you to Google "cell towers falling ice," which propose a real safety risk. In conclusion, I strongly oppose granting a conditional use permit to Pilgrim Luther Church, SBA Communications, to construct 130-foot tower in their front yard, as I believe this would have significant adverse effect on the neighborhood and pose a significant safety risk for many. Thank you. This concludes my testimony, and I appreciate the opportunity to share these thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Say your name, spell your name, and address, please, sir.
My name is Dan Linder. I live at 14104 South 21st Street, just right down the road from where the proposed cell tower is going to be placed. Don't have a lot of prepared notes, but I do have some, some general comments. Mention was made earlier about a, trying to move it where it was at, be out of people's backyards. I can say 130-foot, or effectively a 13-story building is going to be in everyone's backyard from barbecue standpoints, things like that. Irregardless of other safety concerns, I'm also concerned with it being next to a major road, the school there, and then the grade school down the road, and a school bus stop right at that corner. There is always a chance for kids are going to find the attractiveness to try to climb a tall thing. All of us did things like that. So, that's one concern from the attractiveness of students. I think that a tower of that magnitude, we do have some large power lines along Fairview Road, but nowhere near the 130-foot tower height, and again, I'm afraid what that's going to do, I've heard it will or will not detract from home value prices, but still from just a, we're Nebraska, the tallest tree in our neighborhood is probably a 25-foot tree. It's a new neighborhood, new subdivision. This is going to stand out. So, I'm hoping that an alternate location can be found that is more conducive to a business slash industrial look that this tower would provide in our residential area that we live in. So, thank you very much.
Say your name, spell your name.
My name is Scott Sevic, S-E-V-I-C-K. I live at 13710 South 22nd Circle, it's in Trigaron Development. I am president of the homeowners association, and as such, I've received many phone calls, emails, texts. Our neighborhood Facebook page has received many comments. Another online organization, Nextdoor Trigaron, there has been much debate on, on this topic, and there is much opposition to it. As Mr. Harris so well pointed out and quantified how untypical it is to have these cell towers in residential areas, none in Sarpy County, and I think two in Douglas County. It appears that such a prominent position in residential area is not a good idea, and it does seem unnecessary. There are other locations, we're right on the edge of much undeveloped land, and looking at the top topography, there is similar elevations. So, taking such a prominent position in our neighborhoods between Pilgrim's Landing, Trigaron, and we've also spoken with Blackhawk and several others that are also opposed. We do feel that morale, and I take that from everybody that I've spoken with and messages I've read from, is affected. The perception is that value in homes will be decreased, and that the perception of our fine neighborhood, which we take much pride in, will be affected and ultimately result in difficulty in selling homes, and also relates to, to value. So, we, I'm here to represent Trigaron and oppose cell tower at Lutheran.
My name's Christina Riker, R-I-K-E-R, and I live at 14209 South 21st Street. Most everyone has touched on the concerns of the cellphone tower, but I also wanted to talk about the potential health risks of this tower in our area. We have a lot of young children in the area. There is a school at the church there, and there's a school just down the street, an elementary school. The neighborhood is, has young families, and there are young children in the neighborhood, and I just think that children are more susceptible to cellphone towers due to their developing nervous systems, and the promoters of cellphone towers would have you believe that the RF waves are harmless, which, in effect, they are. It's just what is carried on those waves that is the question. I don't think there's been, cell phones haven't been around long enough to study the effects of what is carried on these waves, the effects to people, human bodies. So, my concern is the potential health risks of this tower to mainly children, but all of us who live in this neighborhood. So, I would just ask you to consider the, these potential health risks and what they pose to the surrounding community. Thank you.
Any other public testimony? I will ask the applicant, if she would like to rebut, please come up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As for the first person who spoke about the unnatural surroundings and how unnatural it is to have a cell tower, another candidate, or another spokesperson said, "There are power lines on both sides of the street," which is true. So, what's another pole at eye level? How often do you drive down the street or walk down the street looking 130 feet up in the air? It's a monopole design. It's not guy wires. It's not self-support structure, so it is less visually obstrusive. It's going to be just a pole going straight up, and then at the top, there will be antennas. If you, SBA is a tower company, so yes, they want to put co-locators on, but that is a benefit to the city, because then less carriers will be trying to build towers in the area. The truth is, people are voting with their data usage. That's why we're here, because Verizon needs data coverage. So, I don't know how many people in the neighborhood there have apps on their phone for golfing that, you know, pro whatever, that can tell what their swing is, or how many kids live in all those subdivisions that everybody keeps talking about, that have iPads with Angry Birds, or I have map apps that get me from Kansas to here, that when they don't work, I'm stopping at gas stations trying to figure out where I am. But I know it's unsightly. It is, but so are power lines. And we're also going to have screening at the bottom, so you won't see generators, you won't see the prefab shelters. All you'll see are, oh, and another thing is the fence. There's a fence required in the zoning ordinance to keep children from climbing the tower. There will be landscaping around to match the natural vegetation in the area. As for the health risks, RF emissions are scientifically proven non-ionizing, which means they don't actually damage the biological cells. They have been proven not to cause cancer. Ionizing is what happens whenever, that's what causes cancer, like radiation and UV rays and things like that. I'm not an RF expert, and I can't prove that, but there is a lot of research, and I can definitely provide links to information on that. Just one second, let me get my notes back, I apologize. So, other sites, there are no other fields within, I know everyone talks about how will improve data coverage. There aren't any open fields within the area. There's golf course, which I bet they would take an offer. Everybody loves money. There's the school, but they weren't interested. So, SBA... the school, but they weren't interested, so SBA only had this one option, and really, I feel like the church was being a good neighbor by providing a location that's not in someone's backyard. Let's see. I guess that's all I have. I hope that if there's any suggestions that the board has, that you could let me know or have TME contact me, anything we could do to make this, I guess, less adverse. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners?
Ms. Bird, could I ask you to come back up for a second, I have a question for you. Why, the, the height of this particular pole is quite, quite a bit, what, how did you decide on that, or how did the company decide on such a large?
Well, Verizon has RF engineers, and they have a van that they drive around, and they can pick up radio frequencies, and they can tell where they have coverage loss. And, they can also tell at what height they need to project and receive to maximize their coverage, and they came back with 120 feet. SBA is a tower company, so they were thinking, well, let's add 10 more feet to that, and in case we want T-Mobile, or Sprint, or any other carrier needs coverage in this area as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Mr. Sykes.
Sorry, Ms. Bird, if you sat down, I'll ask you another question. So what would be the impact of not approving this pole at this location in this height? That equate to more site selection, more shorter poles spread over a greater area? What, what are the impacts of not approving this tonight?
Well, that's really a business decision on behalf of, that SBA would have to make. But I can tell you, in other instances, if SBA can't build the tower for Verizon, then Verizon's going to try to build the tower for themselves. So Verizon hired SBA to come in and do this. I can't answer for other carriers, but I know that SBA will, if we're denied, ask me to go forward to the city council, so, does that kind of answer your question, or?
Not really, it's regarding, I just, what is the impact, say city council denies the poll?
Okay.
So what is the impact relative to the system?
Oh, okay.
Of not having this single pole in this location, does that mean there's four poles in four locations that are 60 feet high?
Basically, right now, there's two other cell towers farther away, and I have maps, actually, if you want to see where the other towers are, that can't support the data usage in this area. So, there, data overload, I don't know if you've ever used Spotify, or any other app, and all of a sudden it starts spinning and times out and that kind of thing. That's basically what's happening, is that there's too much data usage to, that the network can't support. So, they want to build the tower right there to boost their data coverage. So, it's not for cellular purposes necessarily, as it is data usage.
Yeah, but it, so it doesn't necessarily-
It would not-
-fluid other towers in different locations, it's just-
Right.
This is a very convenient and efficient location.
Correct.
Thank you.
First, the planning commission is a recommending body, so no matter whether you get approval or denial, recommendation from the planning commission, this will go to the city council.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith.
I have a question, another question, Ms. Bird. You talked about the site selection process a little bit, and you, I believe you mentioned that there is, there is no other potential alternative other site to serve this particular area. Could, could you describe that site selection process a bit?
Sure. Basically, whenever we start the project, we're given a coverage map, and we go knock on doors, and anything that meets the zoning regulations for a conditional use permit, well, obviously, we want to not have to go that route, but if we can only go that route, then we look for spots that would meet the requirements, and we go knock on doors to see what landlords will be interested. And, if we get turned down by everyone, then we go back to Verizon, which is actually what happened in this case, and they expand their search ring as much as they can, which they brought us over to the pilgrim site, and then that allowed us to propose a tower to them, and they accepted. So had that not happened, the search ring would have died, and then Verizon would have hired somebody else to go look for somebody to take a tower.
Is it fair to say, then, that other property owners declined the opportunity to have the tower?
The only other property owner that we contacted was the school.
The school district.
Mm-hmm. Because generally, the schools are interested, and it's an excellent revenue stream, or they could get a new playground, or there's lots of benefits, mutually beneficial.
And under your site selection process, and there, there was no other property that would-
No.
...serve this purpose?
No. We did not approach the golf course, just because of, well, economics of it, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chairman, a question or two, if I might, for the applicant?
Mr. Jacobson.
Before you sit down?
Yes, thank you.
Two questions, both technical in nature. First question is, you mentioned the possibility that this would possibly have enough sufficient headroom at the top to be, have other providers on top of that. Would that change the footprint at the ground? Would you add more communications trailers or building at the bottom of that and expand the site any, is that happening?
No, we would never increase the lease space. In fact, when the engineer that SBA hired did the construction drawings, they went ahead and showed where any additional prefab structures would go in the future. So it would never increase the footprint or height, and, and the screening would remain the same, the lease space would remain the same.
No additional roads in, no additional footprint?
No.
Second question, I believe one of the public questions that was asked was the generator, and the generator running all the time, this is a continuous duty generator?
No, I'm not aware of a generator being installed, there is a backup generator, so if power does fail, the generator would come on, but in the history of me doing this, I've never known a generator to run more than 24 hours. And, we also have to go through the police department and discuss the types of generator that will be installed, but it, it's an emergency generator. So yeah, you have a lot of snow, and it might take them 24 hours to get to it, Verizon doesn't want that, they don't want to have their site down that long, so.
And the generator itself is, is built and designed to standard design criteria that meets our zoning requirements?
Yes, absolutely.
Noise requirements and everything else?
Yes.
In the event it runs in a snowstorm or tornado type environment?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Mr. Sykes.
Regarding the tower, is there any reason that these towers cannot be built in fields? Is there anything that precludes them from being built in an undeveloped ground?
Absolutely not. In this circumstance, though, there wasn't a field that needed data coverage in the area, so, the houses are the ones that are, that area is what's using the data, so, but no, there is no reason why you can't build a cell tower in a field. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Well, hearing no other comments from the other commissioners, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion addressing the request for a conditional use permit, Lot 1, Pilgrim's Landing, replat 1, for Lot 1, located northwest quarter section of 15, Township 14, range 13 east of 6 Primarity in Sarpy County, I'd like to make the recommendation, recommend that be denied based on the applicant's submitted documents and testimony describing the use, specifically the tower placement relative to the immediate area, planning department's app, analysis of the applicant's submittals, which resulted in their recommendation for denial due to perceived negative impact, and specifically to section 6.06, planning commission's discussion tonight, and the input, again, describing negative perceived impacts from the general public tonight, both written and public testimony.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jacobson for denial, second by Ms. Kane. Any further discussion? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
This item will go to city council for a public hearing on February 9th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one small addition after the vote, please? I'd like to welcome all the Boy Scouts and their leaders.
May, Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Let the record indicate, Mr. Ackley has re-entered the room at 7:40 PM. That's all, that's all you're here for.